Oh, thank you.
The spirit of greenhouse gas reduction. Is this our ground?
Yeah, we haven't started our meeting yet. Can we basically just start? Okay. Well, welcome. Thank you for being here. I'll start by saying the Bureau of Education acknowledges that we're in provincial territories and call us First Nation. And we look to that with the privilege of living on this land and the gift of working with our children. I'd like to call this meeting into order and ask if anyone will move to adopt the agenda. That's Jane. Thank you. Thank you. You did much presentations. Thank you. That's great. I'm happy to have you here.
Thank you. I feel so privileged to be here and I want to say I'm not here alone. I know we have our crowd here, but I have a supporting cast and I want to truly briefly acknowledge that well Tree Murdock and of course you know Molly, she was here for the last one, have joined me. And these are key players too. Tree and I worked side by side on all of our climate change and ambientary reporting, our work around operations, senior business and operations. So this is all stuff that we do collaboratively and much of what is up here is Tree's work as well as mine. And Molly is in the fold here too because as a, as a key member of the Ops Management Leadership Team, she's going to inherit. And this is great.
Somebody good is talking about this.
Molly will look after that with Tree. So, you know, it's best to bear witness to your, you know, some of these things. So, sorry. There's the bus tracks. Next slide please. So we did a, we did an update in February. That was really the first kick at a good discussion around where are we going to greenhouse gas emission reduction and what is our environmental footprint? We talked a little bit about the world of operations, perceptions, urgent immediate. These are the things we love. We get super jazzed. A big flood, a door kicked in, maybe even a fire. We deal with that right away. But really the department is much more than that. And we spend a heck of a lot of time on long range. We think about the future. We have to think about the future because change takes a long time to affect. And the decisions around replacing equipment and things have to be many years in the making. And they have to be decisions when you don't have enough dollars, have to be based on data and the best available information that we have. So we really deal with urgent immediate, a lot of long-term planning. This very much falls in the long-term planning mix up. Tree. Okay, just scroll through these quickly. So these are the, these are a summary and four strategic priority. Tree, a little bit of word change from last time. Organizational stability, environmental stewardship, fostering environmental stewardship being the goal. Before it was actions, now it's key result, reduce carbon emissions and environmental footprint. And I like key result because it's let's do something. So it influences our work directly. So these are the things we'll talk about. Why GHG emissions matter, targets, performance highlights, some of the stuff we're doing on our priorities, things coming in the next year. We breeze through a bunch of this. There's a lot of info. We sort of live and breathe it. So I'm going to refresh on some of those slides from last time. Yeah, we care about this a lot because GHG is trapped heat in the atmosphere, thickening air is blanket, making us warmer. Climate change is a long-term shift in temperatures and weather patterns. And, and it's gone away from global warming because the cooling side of climate change is real as well. It's all about us and we've caused this by burning fossil fuels. Consequences, this is where it gets really interesting. Intensities, droughts, water scarcity, severe fires, rising sea levels, flooding, out of the water ice. I think we had all of those this last year and 2023 is not done. I went to the climate leadership, so what was input on by the province in October. First one I've been to in person since 2019. It was great. Before it was always about how are we going to reduce greenhouse gases? The first thing they talked about in this one is how are we going to adapt to climate change? Incredible shift. Really important. Reducing greenhouse gases definitely important as well because it's all tied in. But that climate adaption are super important because these things affect our facilities in a great way. We're going to significantly not a great way. Okay, roadmap to 2030. This is an important document. I have read it. It's about 80 pages. You can find it online. And they say right at the beginning, we need to take urgent action together to reduce the impact of climate change. Build a strong economy is never been clearer, right? They're very much affected by this past year. The intergovernmental panel on climate change, so co-red for humanity. It's the biggest issue facing the world right now. And last one in there. So this thing we see roadmap 2030 is the province's plan. And that's why it should be important to us because it's driving our. Next one please. Covers eight pathways that are all important. So you can just briefly turn and brief us here. Whole carbon energy, transportation, buildings, communities, industry, forests, agriculture, agriculture and fisheries and negative emissions technology. So how we capture carbon, things like that. But really it is much broader than what they used to talk about, which is just how we burn less natural gas. Okay, next one please. So baseline and targets, really, really important for us to actually have targets and have baseline information. The province has briefly provided some of the baseline information for us. Next one please, Tree. And these are the targets from the province, 2025, 16%, 40% of 2030, 16 and 80. And basically 2050 is a net zero point, right? Where are we doing or how are we doing as a province? Really important, right? And that's what they came up and said again, we're not doing well. We're down a percent from 2007. Lot of growth in the province, tremendous growth, right? And that doesn't matter. It's like our school district, our baseline 2007. They don't care that we have 3,000 more kids or five more facilities. Just look after it. And next please. How's Canada doing? This is really interesting because this slide is like two days old. The auditor general for the country came out and said, we're not going to make it, right? Because I've looked at the numbers and it's not good. So this is, this is millions of tons of CO2, okay? So that, yeah, like this, these are megatons, right? So now the, this, so this blue is our net zero pathway that we have to follow as a country. The legislations that dotted top line. Some of the programs we're developing might get us down there. What we've, what we've announced as the goal is that 40% by 2030. And as a country, we're simply not going to make it, right? So what does that mean for us? And I think over time as the pressure increases, there'll be more pressure on school districts and all public sector organizations to spend the money, make the change. And it will become a priority that we're this foisted upon us. This is where we want to be ahead of this curve. And I think we look at some of things coming. You know, I feel relatively comfortable with how we as a district is doing. Next one please, Tree. There's two really important metrics. We talked about them last time as well. There's the absolute, which is how much carbon are we burning? And which turns into GHGs in tons. That's an absolute number. And then our energy intensity is a relative number. So that's where we take the amount of basically pollution we create and divide that by our area to figure out how bad are we per square meter? Or, you know, what's our energy intensity? We sort of spin it around and go, we are, we are as a system, we have an average, but some buildings might be a number that's 300 per square meter and some will be 60 per square meter. We have an averaging around 150. And that is a great equalizer because we can look at a big building and say, how does this big building perform relative to the small building? Is it great? Is it lousy? Some of our lousy small buildings, they're not going to cost about a whole bunch because they don't actually burn relatively a lot of electricity. So we don't want to put a lot of money in them. So it has, it helps us guide our thinking. Okay, this is our reporting cycle. Most of the time, an organization will report over a calendar year, but we're going to report over a school year, decision made with some of our consultants because the, the materials won't be able to process the system. How do we do last school year? How do we project we'll do this coming school year? So we divide into quarters for where we have very significant check-ins with me and team. And we will report out in November each year, which is good because we don't get the utility data for July and August really through until about October. So we can't, we're always trailing, right? So we can't assess how we've done until we hit this point in the fall. And when I say the fine print, about 30 sites, so we essentially look at all of our school sites and then facilities. Okay, Tree, thanks. Yeah. So BEP or our Building Energy Performance Index are per square meter. So it's kind of a, I kind of like this slide because it shows us back to 2010, which is when we're collecting information from. We're sitting in the high 150s and that is our energy intensity per square meter by electricity and natural gas. You can see electricity is almost the same. The natural gas fluctuates up and down. We were starting to make a little bit of progress around 2018, 19. We're down to BEP of average for the system, 148. We don't actually have to report against this. So we're using this as an internal measure. We've selected our own baseline as the 18, 19 year because it's lowest number we had. We're really doing well the next year, 140. Yes, schools are closed for a little while. So that sort of helped the numbers, right? We weren't heating. And then look at the 2162s on there. Those are our two COVID years because we're pounding the ventilation. Increased ventilation is not compatible with energy efficiency. So we're sort of rolled back around to 140. So that's progress for us. But this is going to be our measure tool. We're going to start talking about energy intensity is our own targeting. Carbon baseline. We use 2010 as our carbon baseline. We don't have information from 2007. So our number that we use is 2,559 tons of CO2. So that's the number that we have to get down by 40% by 2030. Okay. Most of it, look at the big blue in the pie graph there, buildings, right? Heating the buildings, some transportation and some vapor. Paper one, I don't really want to talk about, knocked it down a whole bunch. And we've been, it's not worth putting the energy into because of the big issues we have to resolve. Next one please. Here's where we need to get. Like if you look at our direct fuel combustion, so those are our heating systems. We need to go from 2000 back to 2010 down to about 800. It's a huge reduction, right? Because they are pushing our billing numbers within that 40%. It's not even, right? They want our, our natural gas and really, you know, and electricity to get down to almost 60 and transportation down to less because they recognize how much tougher that is to me. So we need to get down to somewhere around 1,100 from 2,559. That's a long gap. If you look at where we are now, though, in 2022, we are 2,140 or 16% reduction to date. It's pretty good, right? And if you think back to that first one, the target for 2025, 16%, so we're three years ahead of the target, but we got a ways to go to hit the 2030 target. All right, next one please. So those are, we'll, we'll fill in some gaps in here, but you can see you're going to, we have some significant reductions to make by 2030. Excellent, please, Tree. So energy intensity, our eight-year goal to drop by, from 148, we want to get down to 89. We got to 90, I'd be pretty happy. But you can see, so there's a divide in there and, and this is important because we don't see dropping our electric consumption a lot because what we're going to do is invert the scales. We're going to push it down by doing more LED work and then we're going to drive it up by electrifying some of our buildings. So we have to offset and we have to get rid of waste electric, like all, all this waste load of electricity we have because we're going to push it up again as we electrify the airlines. It's the fuels that we really want to hit. Yeah.
I saw on the slide it said, I did say heating oil and propane. Do we still have some schools that are heated?
We have propane for modulars. Yeah, no heating oil. We used to have heating oil at Union Bay School.
Okay, it was funny. I saw that one.
So that file, we were able to cancel that contract a few years ago.
But that's good for the board to be aware of. So as I had portables, we're adding our natural gas factor that.
No, no, natural gas.
Well, not natural, but propane through combustibles.
We're, the most recent ones are going to electrify, but we have lots with propane.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's like mini duck lists?
Yeah. Many money. True. But we are putting in the last ones we put in a padlock.
Okay, okay.
So next one, please. Okay, this is, so now for us to make results, we need to set targets. Something we haven't really done much of in the past. So what we see here is to get our 40. We just want this 1% glide down in electrical, which I really want to push harder in the next year or two. I want that to drop by 10 or 12% and then watch it creep up. And the natural gas down of 10% a year, right? So this is just showing that fuels, we want to become smaller than the electricity. Next one please. That's that 3% reduction. Target for BEP to get us down to 89. I love these smooth curves. Next one please. Okay, this is where it gets interesting. So how, how have we done, right, against our targets? So that correction, those are those COVID years, right? They're up. And so we understand why they're up. Now we pulled it back on track. Okay, and we want to follow this curve. Next one please. So there's electrical. So electrical, yeah, we have, again, a tough year on work days. Natural gas, good. Okay, making progress. So we're a little below there. We're a little above electricity. So we're kind of riding the line. Next one. This is a great slide because, boom, this is the very bottom, 22, 23. To get an equivalent kilowatt hour of electricity, price of 12 cents, right? Five and a half cents for natural gas and 13.3 for propane. Natural gas is a great deal, okay?
I just didn't even hear that. I'm just going to go blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, so that is, why do we use natural gas unless you're Canada? Because it's cheap and it's efficient. And that's been pushed as the solution. As you can see, you look back, you look back in 17, 18, 3 cents. Oh my goodness, right? And the next slide is really interesting. So energy use, so BC Hydro sees about 40% of the slice there and 60% of the gobs, right? Whereas Hydro, you're a Fordist, nice big part of the, I have a left eye, small piece there, because it's cheap. Right? So that is why natural gas is so prevalent. It's plentiful, available and inexpensive. Next up. So how do we do? Well, electricity, yeah, so, so, right? Natural gas, good. And 140, we'll take it, right? We'll take it. Next please. And here's some of the gaps. Oh, paper, I don't know what happened. Looks like we didn't count for a while and then we caught up. So really what you're seeing there is, is the printers disappeared. Right in the middle there, right around 2018, Josh made a lot of enemies. And he said, your printer is gone. That's a great printer. And so everybody lost the printer. We went to common manufacturers, saved a lot of paper. Right? So those are, those are good things. Buildings, transportation, we're really just getting going. Next please. Bottom line, this year, 4% reduction. Okay, that's good. Because if you do 4% a year, you're making your targets, right? We, and that's overall. So I really, I really like that. We're having to make 10% because we, like everybody else, we have a lot of ground to make up. 4% a year is really a cheap little number. And we've had an 18% improvement over 21, 22 because it was so wretched because of COVID. This number at the bottom in green, 1.6 million. If we hit our targets, that would be the key element of savings. If we make the reductions, that's what this organization would save pretty early in energy costs. Or would save cumulatively, sorry, over the next eight years in energy costs. That's a big number, right? And I'll, I'll show you how we get there and then. Okay, this is a typical Q sum graph, which is cumulative summary. The blue line across the top is the let's do nothing. Let's stick the hole, bury our heads in the sand and just continue as per normal. Make no investments or no change in culture or behavior. So that's clearly what we're, what we want to do. The dotted line down is the target path we should be following. Decreasing our e-kilowatt hours or our tons of CO2. Next please. This is what we're doing in green, right? There's COVID glassing this up. Next one. Here's how the math works. So on the right-hand side, you can see there's a little dollar sign. So as you go above that, you're getting into savings. When you go below that, you're spending more than you should. So in the law, in that 18, in that, sorry, 21, 22, 22, 23, we spent more than we should have according to our targets and where we should be because we increased our ventilation so much. As we decrease and start dipping below the do nothing, you cut the segment. And those savings are cumulative as we go through the years. Get up to 2030 and be in the vicinity of having saved 1.6 million bucks, which is good. Next please. Okay, some of the projects go on through. So I'll talk about lighting need in buildings because it's kind of a, you're kind of work on. Next please, Tree. Okay, this is lighting. This is very, very busy slide. The two columns there that are the classroom LED and exterior LED, the green all the way down where it says excellent. We've done all our outside lighting. Awesome.
Nice.
Inside, where really, where we really make the money. The excellent means full schools done and the none means basically no classrooms. We've done all our gyms. We've done all our shops, all our big spaces, music rooms. There's a lot of schools there in Gray where we have none in classrooms, but we're picking off one or two a year and we have a plan. Okay, next one. So major actions, methodical full lighting replacement funding request. So we hit the previous summer in Lakeview, this summer, it just went by, we had dam and tender was posted to BC bid today to get all of airport school done. These cost a hundred to $150,000. Once we get them done though, we have immediate savings and return on investment of all five years' costs, okay? Still quite a bit of money, but it's great if anyone has a spare hundred grand around, you spend it just like that, will ya? We have that full inventory of every light in the district. And that is really important. Like we can tell you that at Aspen Park Elementary, we have 620 light fixtures. They provide this average lighting level and we measure it at S height for students. So we know what it's like. So we can look in there and go, what's the lighting like in this school? And it provides what our next schools are going to be. If you go into airport, it's a bit dingy, right? It's not very bright. It's a tremendous difference. The other thing is when we go in and we touch a classroom, we automatically do change all the lights, right? So then our electricians can go into that database or see an access to and enter it in there. So again, each of that are current. We've updated our technical specs, lots of lunch and learns, learning about stuff. And we determined our optimal lighting control solutions, which we tested for the second summer. And it was a sparkling win, I would say, on this. And we're fine. Next one. So that's lighting. We're well underway. BEV, battery electric vehicles. There's our first trades van driven by our electrician appropriately. We had lots of preparation around this. Like folks were interested. We talked about it, it's like, oh, so much Ian, not really interested, like my man. Somebody driving a 2007 van, don't want it, you know? But the beauty is everyone has seen it now, but oh, that's really nice. Drives beautifully. The extra weight from the battery is super stable on the road, very torquey. And there's that little thing called preconditioning. So when you're plugged into the charger, you actually program how you want your vehicle to be when you sit in it at 7:40 each morning. It'll be 20 degrees inside, the windows will be clear, the seat is warm and the radio set to the station you want. You back out. That's got a bit of cachet to it as well, right? So this is, this is good. That's that.
I know, Derek. I know, ready to say.
All of a sudden, we have a little bit more interest in the vehicles. So that's good. And beautifully geared up and the, the price is coming down. And I was able to buy this through the Holman Group, which is a provincial purchasing organization. And interestingly, they still haven't given us a bill. So that was June. I asked four times, the invoice, they're not asking me anymore. So we'll see that. I could buy another one.
It's like a new thought.
Okay, next slide please. So link decarbonization study, we talked about this. How do we get from here, a bunch of trades vans, to over here? Particularly when we're dealing with a lot of, a lot of personalities that are, you know, we get, we all get ingrained in our ways. I can't do my job unless I have a, you know, so it's, it's change. So the GHG engineering helped us with this. They interviewed a lot of our trade staff. They interviewed us. We provided them with data, figured out how far we sort of drive each day. What kind of vehicles could we use? Very thorough study, 180 pages of joy and reading. And in there though, here's the order in which you should replace your vehicles. Here's the types of vehicles you should use. Here's what's going to cost. Cost the hydro part is huge. We're going to have to completely reconfigure our yard, which are, so, so, so a lot. So we, we really just, Tree and I, I would say, when was our last meeting? This week? Last week, yeah. So it's just finished.
That was just, you had a grant for that.
Yeah, so we got a grant from BC. We had the standard was about 24 grand.
Yeah, yeah.
We got a $19,000 grant, which I think is a win. We got the check.
Cool.
Last week?
Thanks.
We got the straight. So vehicle purchases, so a big transition. And seeing with the organic going, particularly water loss and internal combustion in the vehicle. He didn't cry, but it was close. It's, it's big. It's really big. The Holman Group, which took a long time to get connected with them because the provincial procurement program has shifted significantly. And it's, it's important to be part of that. And next one's. So this is, this really is a polls no excursion. They gave us three scenarios we could follow. They go business as usual. Do what you do in biointernal combustion. Keep going. Of course, that's not on there. High operating expenses, 9.6 million total cost ownership over the next 10 years. Or we could follow the provincial guidelines for electrification. 10 and a half million bucks in ownership cost is high because we're going to be buying all this charging infrastructure in the shortest amount of time. We've 50% reduced emissions by 2030 and 100% by 2037. Still spending 150 a year on vehicles. We have to spend 250. In a scenario of three electrification based on budget, we have about 150,000 local capital. Not 8.9 million total cost of ownership. 28% condition reduction by 2030 and 100% by 2045. Those are good numbers, right? So this is, the, what I like about this is it tells us that what we're doing is okay. Keep moving as you're going. And if there's opportunities where there might be an extra 100,000 lying around, you know, you can, you can accelerate your purchase program and make a difference. Okay. Next one please.
What are the, what are the, it said the rebates for the infrastructure rebates. Is that to the provincial government?
Yeah, strictly BC. So there's your, and actually we just had an email summarizing where all the rebate starts. It's going to be a tremendous amount of money to put the infrastructure in. This hydro has to up the service, probably a new service at VR8. And then the chargers are fairly expensive. It's 500 to 750,000 dollars for a store, probably a half of what we have. So other, just, there's a few little hints to roll up there, Tree. The goal electric bus program is the one we applied to for buses, which is all coming through. Clean BC, which is really an arm of Hydro. I've had success with them. Molly and I each have competed for. requested to, we're sort of racing each other, who's going to get the, you know, get there's a route first. And, um, depending on what you're doing, there's different sources, whether you're getting infrastructure vehicles or, or trying to, um, that sort of thing. So there's different ones that we're exploring, all of them. Next, please tree, yeah. So buildings, this is the big problem, right? This is our sixty percent issue. So BC's electrification roadmap, they, they put this up there. It's a lot of pages that says fuel switch electrify and put in heat pumps, right? So, uh, here's another fancy chart, the power doing. So plant LWT, the left column with all the Y's in it, do we have low water temperature boilers or condensing boilers? We're rocking it here, right? We're good. So not only this, the difference between the old boilers and the new is the efficiency is way higher than these new low water temperature ones. They push out water to nine hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty degrees. Uh, the old systems rock around one eighty, right? And they, they put an awful lot, fifty percent of it went out the flue as waste. So when you go one column over terminal low water temperature, there's all these inline systems that were built years ago that rely on that higher water. Most of those we have not upgraded. They still function with a lower water temperature, but they're not as efficient. But what we're playing is we electrify, they become a non-factor. The last three columns, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, where new aging and the life, uh, they have no grid on there. All of our heating systems in our schools are either in the green or light yellow, meaning we're in good shape, they're, they're new and quite efficient. So mechanically, if we just, if we weren't going to be switching out to electric, we would be okay. But as we transition, one of the most efficient possible situations we can be in, we're natural gas. Next one, please. So strategic priorities. Now is when we need to really be level-headed about the decisions we make. So we look at the biggest generators, the poor performers, the GHE reduction, like who's really burning the juice in these? And then finally, our maintenance issues are our, our headaches. Right? So we blend all that information together to create a prioritized list for what we should do today. Uh, next one, please. So largest, uh, largest consumers, it's our high schools, Bannia School, Highland, thirty-two percent. Right there. Okay, they, they are one-third. Uh, and this is from our twenty-two, twenty-three data. Next on the line is Quinich, right? So those, those high schools, they, they burn a lot of energy. Next. And then our poor performers. So Cumberland, um, Strathcona at the very top, that's one school we haven't updated because we're going to get this fancy shiny expansion and we're going to completely change the heating diagram. New window, new building envelope, and that number's going to get drilled down. So not really about that one. Sandwich is tiny, we didn't just say SPO. So we start looking at these and go, okay, other schools, you know, what, what area is efficient? You can see there, Bannia's not looking super efficient. Uh, Nitro, Heeman Valley View, you know, and they, they sort of roll down the list. Next, please. So we start crossing these over. Who's a big emitter? Who's not very efficient? And then we also have to add in greenhouse gas reduction and maintenance issues. So if we scoot over, another slide. Um, I have a Quinich's turn eight for an elementary school, right? A lot of greenhouse gases. And one more in here. Um, just before we leave this, I, I don't put it in here, but it's about the ministry. And it's about us making a shift of not asking for a minor mechanical upgrade, but saying we need to spend a million to two and a half billion dollars to completely transition our heating plant to meet these goals. They're educational goals, right? But they're important provincial targets. How do we convince the ministry to do that? So I have a star by Quinich because it's a pretty big emitter, not super efficient, but it's achievable, right? It's a fairly modern school and it's got a big boiler room. So that's our first target. Because I want to prove to the ministry that we can electrify a school without paying a fortune and make a significant change before we tackle something like Bannia, where we're going to ask for a lot. So we want to prove our success. Next, please. So I have a paper this. We have AFG funding, typically not enough in there to deal with a mechanical issue like this. Um, SEP is that school enhancement. That's a prime target, as is carbon neutral capital planning. And next, please. Clean BC incentives. Get you a little bit of money, get your project and you apply. Always applying for ABC grants because again, twenty-five, thirty or forty thousand lets us do something else to support this. Low carbon economy funds, point five million. That's if we, uh, you know, this is out of our, out of our reach, I would say, because you have this, you have to pay crap. But that's really the tangible term of our money. Okay? We'll roll on through this. Um, one more. So what have we done? So we have a lot of data, just keep scrolling through these, Tree, please. So we've boiler replaced in the, in the last twelve years, everything, so we're doing well. So electrification has started as well, building control's done, LED lighting underway. Full LED lighting done in a bunch of schools, vehicle transition has begun. So the big targets, we're, we're tackling all of them. Not splitting all our energy into one place, we're spreading it out. Next, please. And the strategic energy management plan, this is this ongoing iterative plan about what are we. Okay? So we know from this year, we need one percent electricity and ten percent of natural gas, which is really eight hundred and fifty-two thousand equivalent kilowatts. Next one, Tree, please. So how do we get there? RCX, and we'll talk about this in a sec, which is recommissioning or continuous optimization. Fuel switching for DEM and Quinich, we can do more than a million this year, all right? Excellent, please. Projects underway. So Glacier View, this is a good one. We've got the PB array up there. Ads, that's a bonus for us, six thousand kilowatt hours per month is what it should generate, which is about what we spend in the summer on electricity there. Um, and you know, so maybe, maybe June through to September. Then the other months were quite, quite a bit more, but we'll be, uh, we'll netting ourselves out for a few months. DEM, we're electrifying, that project starts this week. Um, Idiand's Way, SBO. Gratitude to the board for nodding up and down when we asked for a little more money to electrify, that's awesome. Continuous optimization. This is Hydro and Forest, they help us to fix the niggly issues with things like our controls, right? So we look, so, so don't change your system, just think for more, right? Right? So there, so I applied to them for continuous optimization for every school. And we're receiving a grant for every school's school through funding. We pay out front, we get the money back as we complete the work. I just want to show you the next slide. Uh, and Quinich having like a patient project request in. These are some of the things that went in on the capital plan. There are DEM in phase two, which is PB array, controls at airport, hallway lighting. Um, building envelope upgrade, really important because it makes the building warmer. So you don't have to heat as much. Um, some makeup areas for Bannia, which are very inefficient. And Quinich phase one electrification. It's all, all we're pressed in. First, Glacier View, looks awesome. We had to do part of the route, kind of ran out of money. Um, so I would have loved to have done the whole thing, but it was an add-in to make sure we had new roof under it. Looks great and it's functioning. Next slide, please. This is the display that's inside the entrance, it shows you how much electricity you generate. Really cool, you can see it inside the days. Um, next one. Okay, recommissioning. So we're doing this at nineteen sites, it'll be completed in May. There is a, uh, this, uh, this guy Marco Vieri is kind of a control salon. And he is going through all of our controls line by line, it's going to take basically a year. Uh, it's paid to true hydro for this. A lot of it is the simple stuff like scheduling calendars, optimizing when you should start, and doing a bunch of demand-based ventilation, like if there's people there, add more air. If there's not, don't. Um, at all these sites, next one. We could save two point five million kilowatt hours by doing this work. Pretty much inside a year. Okay, next, I want to show you this, this is a great slide. The dark blue is electrical consumption by day from our smart meter at Quinich Elementary. So the dark blue was last year. Okay, the light blue is this year after continuous optimization. See where the school year ended, July first? And then the light blue line goes all low because there's nobody in the school. The previous year stayed high. That's continuous optimization. Our electricity bills at a whole bunch of our schools this summer went down by thirty percent.
That's amazing.
Awesome, that's super awesome. And that's, uh, that's they drill right in and look at the smart meter, see where the spikes are, go to the controls, go, well, why is that on? Why is that? So that's, that's continuous optimization at a glance. And we have that sort of repeated through the district in numerous places. Last Christmas, just by shutting down over the holiday period, tremendous savings. Okay, next one. So a little bit of culture change, this was out of, um, this is out of the Guardian in the UK. You know, we, we made the, the auditor generals were, were saying we're not going to make it. Just making international headlines. You know, as a very wealthy G seven country, um, we need to set an example and we should do that at the local level as well. Next slide, please. One of the things that we're doing this year, um, I'm an educator, so I think our report card is now probably a learning summary. But I'm not sure if we should send out a learning summary to the school at that level. I'm operations, we're sending you a report card. So we sent a report to adult schools last week on how well they did last year with their energy consumption. This is a sample, we do a glossary on there and say, you know, here's some, uh, here's some terms, here's some things you can do, get people interested, but you know, turn off the lights in your classroom, power down vice your mind and use limit, use discretionary practices for smart waves. Get those ears, you know, so there's some points in there. Next one. And then this is what we show in value elementary, here's your historical performance. Um, and what your target should be? How many tons of greenhouse gas did you produce in the last twelve months? Where do we want you to go? How much electricity did you use? And then, uh, next one. We show them relative performance of them against the other elementary schools. So it's just info, you know? Um, where do you sit? Like look at the electric schools on the far right there, DEM, Harvey, Perseverance. Right? The greenhouse gas emissions way, way lower. So we want that charge to go flat or across. Okay, so that's, uh, and then we wanted to begin conversations because each school has an energy champion. I met with them last year, we got excited about the things you can do. So we want them to have information that they can use with their staff as well. Okay, next line. So next steps for us. Plans unfolding, we're, we're, we have to look at, um, what's really tough for me is in this environment, we do not have a predictable flow of cash to resolve our issues. If you're a municipality, you can project your taxes over five years and go, if you're in a pharmacy, you have this money. We have to apply every year and we may or may not get funded. So we can have the world's best plan, but if Quinich electrification does not get funded, that work is not happening, right? Unless, as a board decide that, you know, we're going to pull this big chunk of money out. And in the competing demands of education, I don't see that as reasonable, right? We rely on ministry funding, which is not predictable. So that's the biggest barrier for us, so we're going to continually have that data plan. So we keep requesting projects and that's why I want this Quinich one to work. We can do that one for under a million. So divide it into two pieces, slice that kind of four fifty, you know, should be really powerful. One, clean decarbonization plan, we'll just keep plugging away at that. Continuous optimization right through to May, awesome work. We'll see the uniform results from that and annual reporting. How do you, we, we send a report card to schools. Our report card is the happy, the sad, or the black faces, right? And we're hoping to see lots of happy faces. Um, wow. That's a picture from, from college. I mean, I just love it, right? This is, uh, this is the feel-good stuff. Uh, spending money in a different way around our, uh, improvements, culture changes. Lot of trees planted at Isfeld this year, a bunch of trees are courting now. We're really looking at those southern exposures and going, let's, let's get trees in, variety shade. Let's get, we've got, pretty much we're going to go film all our southeast exposures. We're doing work in the valley before us right now as well. We balance off all of that with this kind of bricks and mortar work too, because we want the kids to be excited about it so they carry our message. So really for us, how are we going to get there? We're going to, we're going to, we're going to, over the next eight years, which is what we have to hit the twenty-forty target, because we just reported on twenty-two, is we're going to electrify and we're going to change lighting on LED. If we do Quinich over two years, and then we do Isfeld over two years and Bannia over two years, we hit our targets, right? And then we can hit Highland, you know, over two years. Will we get all that funding? But we can meet a twenty-thirty target by doing that. And I think that is something that is, should be, um, should be achievable and certainly is something that we can create reports and data for, um, energy engineering and manage those projects. So, so that's our plan and that will get us there. We just are reliant upon a funding stream from a province that isn't necessarily going to win this. So that's where those letters that help comes around, you know, what is, where do we, you know, we're always looking for ways to improve. And, you know, for us, it's having that predictable funding stream to address these issues in where for us, we need their guidance. That's it. Say something.
We have ten minutes.
So much.
Wow.
That is incredible.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for that. That's great. Um, I'm wondering open forward questions, Kristine.
I've got so many, but I'm just going to stick with a few. So from everything that I've heard then, from one of the critical issues is funding, advocacy for funding for electrification is kind of the bottom underlying thing that I heard is that if, if the ministry can get that funding for the electrification, then there's a possibility for us to meet our greenhouse gas emissions. Now, because that's reliant on them, you know, and if we don't meet that because we haven't got the funding, like, so how does that work? Do you know what I'm saying? Because it's.
So we make this as part of our annual capital plan submission.
Right.
Right, which we did with Quinich.
Yeah.
So we're going to continue to do that. They generally don't approve everything on your wish list.
Right.
Right? So that, that piece of it is, so we made our submission. And I think the, the interesting advocacy part is greenhouse gas reductions are different in all the different parts of the province. So it's kind of a, to me, it's more generic around initiatives, funding for initiatives that support greenhouse gas reduction.
Gotcha.
Right? It could be different in different places.
Right.
You know, depending where you are in a province. So for us, it's, it's really all about electrification. And we can, it can work for our climate and it's, uh, it's projects we can do. But that one's really interesting. We're, we're out to tender for that. It's closed. The work will be done probably over winter break. And then we'll be into a modernized electrified school. And the mechanical engineer I've been working with on the project was, he was, he's almost misty about it. He goes, this is the future. You know, this is, you know, ERVs are us.
Yes.
And it's, it's again, it's an easy one. And a transition of something like Quinich could be really effective once. But that adds advocacy for funding for their targets.
Yeah, because I feel like we could get penalized for not getting the funding from the ministry. And then is there any other things that they factor into our, um, into our reductions? Like all the tree planting that we're doing, the garden spaces? These are things that in, um, in other parts of the world are starting to get quantified for greenhouse gas emissions and carbon reduction. Is that something that's even been discussed or no?
What I think is it's terrible what we wish for. It's honestly, because what I see out of the province is they're keeping it simple and I'm actually liking that.
Okay.
Because they haven't gone after things like, well, what will business drive? You know, which has a significant carbon footprint. You know, which has a significant carbon footprint. What do all the people that drive to work? You know, like, they have not gone for what I consider the sort of ancillary things, and they're sniffing around about that. So I'd rather not ask about the trees we find. And, you know, like, you keep it really simple to the big, to the big issues. But you're right. Those, I think, are, again, are a responsibility for us.
Yeah.
To do that work.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Justin. Um, thank you for slowing things down a little bit here and there too. Like, when you said your everyday Q seven, I went, when you said, you know, the summary, I went, eh, goodness. Um, so one thing I am curious about, just for a moment, outside our walls, is in the run, the idea of climate change, like, what, what actually happens? Is there a process with, um, when six hundred and fifty lights are changed up? Really, like, what happens to be sort of like it? What can you recycle, what can you, whatever, is there donation process? So I was just wondering.
That's good, because there, it, it honestly depends on what we are taking out. Um, we have very few ballasts that still have PCDs in them. We used to have to have big barrels to collect, uh, lighting ballasts, because it had a PCD, you know? We take them apart. So our tubes go to the recycling. We take all our tubes to the recycle area, and we get a metal bin, separate the metal on our writing fixtures. So we also do the best we can on those. Um, and we don't compensate those back to the system. So we, we, we make them inoperable, because they're just inefficient.
Okay, cool. Sharon, yes?
Yeah, I, um, thank you all for the, for the work and for the presentation. Um, where I left a little card, and they found it really great. So that, how, how does this school not have to do it? Everybody's appreciating that. And then they can see other than we're, other people. I wanted to, to just maybe comment a little bit of Kristi's question about what if we don't get the money and the advocacy. And when, when our district, um, when we did our presentation to the Selective Committee in June, that was, there were three areas we spoke to. And one of them was about needing more funding for the electrification. And, and, um, MLA's were very curious. It was really interesting to hear the kinds of questions they had, the information that I had to be able to answer. Not all of the questions, but quite a few. But that multiple people ahead of me, um, were talking about similar kinds of things in terms of keeping up on electrification. Not, not for school districts, um, because they were, they weren't in that queue. But it was really interesting how, when we spoke about the advocacy, how interested that organized, that committee is, which is, which is created to help form budget. And the questions they were asking about, well, how much does it cost? But what I was sharing with the information that we provided for the district to use, how much it costs to electrify a school versus how much money we get annually, just carved to that specific area, and all the other asks that we have to make in order to make that happen. So it, multiple ways to, to, to do that advocacy. Um, and then the creativity of asking all the different ways. Yeah, I just wanted to share that it was. Yeah, it was really that opportunity where the MLA's can ask questions during the Selective Committee of Governance, Governance, showed that they were as interested in some of this as we were trying to convey our ask. It's getting nice.
I think the other side effect of this is that, you know, it's a lot of electricity to do the system. So one of the things that we've done in the last year or two is we've assessed every main electrical service. Because if you go and electrify a school and then run a juice, run it, that's a real problem, because it takes a year to do a electrical service. So now we now have an engineered survey of every electrical service. So we know if we're asking whether we need to upgrade the system. We brought kind of a batting word for that as well. It's, it's an important piece, is that, like you said, there's all on. You know, you do something and then it has these, like, the PV array, our unintended consequence was we had.
Yeah.
Because you don't want to put it on the whole grid.
No.
You know, so that there's, um, there's the project fee and then the other.
Sarah Jane, you have a question? Sarah Jane, you have a question?
Yeah.
You're next, come on in.
Yeah. Um, one thing that I was wondering about, and I, I don't know if it just wasn't in our, in the summary, or maybe it wasn't, I just wasn't paying attention, but is this building. I've heard like, over and over so many times about this building.
It's very poor.
Being such a nightmare.
Yeah.
Do we have like, a little bit of a, a plan for, for this building? Or are we kind of waiting to see, like, exactly? Like, I know that there is some talk about what's meant to be happening here, but.
So the BBE is very poor, because it's, it's a poor performer. The, the consumption level is low.
Okay.
Right, so it's a poor performer, so it, it's down on this, so it's to be worked on. We basically have thirty-five-year-old sort of hotel heater coolers in all the offices. It's occupied all year. It just lends itself to inefficiency. So we would look at electrifying this building, but it would be in.
Down in the list of priorities.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's up there.
And then something that just does a quick little tagline, something that I thought was an interesting comment that I just read. How effective do you think that that window filming is in some of the buildings? As far as like, preserving some of the integrity of the.
It's actually, we've done it on every southeast exposure. We started with the second floors, because, you know, we, we kind of change warmer in May and June and September. And we're just, you know, it's overbearing, overwhelming in those classrooms. And it provided an elemental relief.
Yeah.
You have to, you have to, so you have, if you have the window film, the blinds are down in the morning when the sun's streaming in, and the correct use of the windows being open for cross-coal ventilation, you can sort of survive.
Yeah.
You know, but you have to throw all the pieces together.
Yeah.
Right?
It was just curious, we did that at my house. And I live on that cut block in Cumberland.
Yeah.
And my house gets like, full sun in every window from one block till sundown.
Yeah.
Plus I have blinds, plus I have bamboo on the outside, plus I have window film, and we have a heat pump. And it's like, the window film works. I was just wondering if the commercial level affects if it actually had any impact. It's cool what it does, because it's an inexpensive way to solve a, a problem that's pretty severe.
Well, Kristi, yeah, thank you. What a, what a thorough, an excellent presentation. I, I think I just wanted to comment more than a question, which is, you know, I know that aspirational, it's almost an artificial lowering, which is nice and smooth. And but just acknowledging, when you started, you talked, this is more than greenhouse gas reduction, and it's connected to climate change. And climate change is actually causing demands that are going in the opposite direction. So when we have, you know, incredible heat domes, or we have, you know, twenty-five degree November days and thirty-five degree May days, that while we're trying to lower greenhouse reductions, the actual need has increased year by year because of those extremes that we're seeing in the climate. So, you know, I, I just really appreciate the ambitious nature, but just wanted to articulate some of the complexity actually arriving at twenty thirty of the intended outcome.
If you don't mind, just a couple of quick ones. Um, the continuous optimization program, is that a one-year program? Is that an ongoing?
You basically, it's more of a, you apply by site, and it takes as long as it takes, really. And so just given the number of sites, it's sort of added up to a year. But that's more happenstance than anything else. Just because the outage age, each site takes two to three weeks to complete. So it is really, um, per site. So I applied for all at the same time, and we're approved for all. So it just now happens sequentially. Yeah, and really, uh, Ready Engineering, Boom, which is the company that Marco works for, I mean, it's just been such a huge help, because once you get the approval, basically takes the documents out of your hand and does the work to keep you updated. And he works, um, really closely with our heating staff. So that they're in the loop, and there's just great communication. He's come and done a bunch of site business as well.
Yeah, and I'm also curious how long, um, you've been doing the report cards to the schools, but seems like a great idea.
I think that would be about a week.
Yes. I guess, that is a great idea.
Sure. Yeah, that was number one. And now, to be fair, uh, I, I would say, like, Tree did a lot of work on it, and, um, we did a lot of iterations, went back and forth. We, we opted not to send it till we had, because we were gonna be sending it to twenty-one, twenty-two information. We thought, oh, you know, because we wanted to send it for the first of September. We wouldn't have a DAT. So we said, well, certainly if they had it, we'll send it. But there was a lot of, a lot of sort of hooing around as to what, uh, this should look like and what the wording should be like. Yeah.
So I have one last question, and it relates to, um, your comments about advocacy. I know at the municipal level, there's kind of discussion around, um, property assessed clean energy, where people can, um, oral against some of the property taxes, add it to their property taxes, and then re, to, it's almost like a loan. And then, then you repay it through the savings that are generated on an ongoing basis. Do you think that would have any, um, utility within a school district context?
Actually, I think the volume of dollars is so high. You know, and you need the money up in, upfront. So, you know, the, because the whole heat pump is kind of nine to sixteen thousand, depending on how big it is, and for us, we're, you know, a million to two point five. So, I mean, I love the idea of us doing that, because, you know, those kingdom of savings, you know, I'd be happy if we could do something like that, but I'm not sure. We had, um, Tree and I had a very good meeting with the city of Corky. They have a manager of engineering for environmental projects. You know, and a technician associated. And they're really at the beginning of the beginning. They only started really collecting their data. Yeah, we had a great discussion, because I met them in, in Cameron's. You know, and, and they're, we're sharing, um, because, you know, everybody has good ideas. And they're putting, uh, air quality monitors on all our schools. So, and they're gonna, the city of Corky's gonna collect their information. So that's a cloud of things, but we really live in two different worlds from upfront tomorrow. That, that was really clear after our meeting. Um, we've also connected with the CBRD. They have a new coordinator of energy projects. And, um, we're gonna start talking about things like, how could we take heat from the cooling in the ice cream to Venni and maybe pipe that through to Venni? You know, so there's, there's, we're, um, I think, driving our next.
Right.
Yeah.
I actually got, was on that little tour, then you got shown around that. And the, the guy was kind of telling us that that was like a little bit of an idea that somebody had had, like, you know, last year, I think.
Yeah.
Wasn't that last year?
You're talking about it for the hospital and Croatia years ago.
Yeah.
And then.
It's a really cool idea. I was up on the roof of the, of the, checking it out, looking at what was wet there.
Yeah.
The guy was stoked, and he kept a very tiny.
Seen right down into the rain pit.
Seen, yeah, I saw it. It's just like, I saw it in my little eye, but it was really cool, it's a cool idea.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, thank you very much, and all, all three of you for, for having us. Your hesitation, your, all the hard work you're doing. It's really, really appreciated. Yeah, thank you. It's these two. Hi, yours.
Yeah, we very much appreciate your support.
Thank you. No, hi.
Yeah, thanks, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tree.